Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to our regular meeting for January 26, 2022. Time is nine o'clock. Before we formally begin, I'd like to invite Mr. Jim Keen up, the chaplain for our sheriff's office, to provide an invocation and lead us in the pledge.
Well, good morning, Lord. It's hard to believe that we're already a month into the new year, and none of us really know what all that's going to hold. We have the Chinese and Koreans causing trouble in one part of the world and Russians in another, and here we are in Little Albert County, needing your wisdom for the things that are before us. I'm thinking of King David thousands of years ago praying for his son Solomon, who was going to take over the country, that may in his reigns righteous people prosper and may there be peace. We certainly need that now. We ask that people who are doing the right thing would sense prosperity from you, and that indeed we would have peace. Give wisdom to our county commissioners, and we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen. Shall we pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. Amanda, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Thayer?
Here.
Commissioner Pettit?
Here.
All right, the first item we have is approval of the agenda. As I understand, we have no changes. I'd accept a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
A second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, first items of business we have are the items on consent. I'd accept a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second to accept the items on consent as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All righty, elected officials. Okay, all righty. I guess we've had some folks that have come in expecting to hear the Miller Ranch service plans. Those are scheduled for 1:00 PM today. If that affects your timing, I apologize if you had a different notice, so. Thank you, sir. Yes, yes, there will be public comment at that time. All righty, elected officials, department head staff reports. Do we have any elected officials? Sherry, I know we did take your trustee report, I know.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. Sherry Hewlett, Albert County Treasurer and Public Trustee. Just a little transparency, most of you probably got your property tax notices in the mail. In my efforts to let the citizens know how much went to each taxing district with the graph that you see on the tax notice, the printing company, the formula that they use to create that graph in the mill levy side of your tax notice, they did a running total. So the mails that you see on there are not the actual mails for the district. It's a, so general fund starts off with their correct mail, and then it adds.
Showing the increment versus, or?
Yes. So I just wanted folks to know that. It's, that didn't affect the total that's due. The values are correct, it's simply a printing error. I've been in touch with the vendor, and they know about it. They've since corrected it, so it doesn't happen next year. It's unfortunate, I apologize. They didn't catch it. I didn't catch it when I proofed it, so I'll take the blame for that. But anyhow, if the citizens or anybody would like to see the correct mails on there, you can get that from the website, from my website, under Property Tax Inquiry. Everything on the treasurer application is correct, everything online is correct. The tax notice reflects the correct tax amount that's due. It's just a printing error. So I just wanted to let people know that. Give us a call, we can send you a duplicate notice or just print a statement of taxes. So I apologize to the taxing entities that that happened, but they're still going to, we're still going to collect the correct amount. So I just wanted to be transparent on that, and as far as the public trustee report, it's pretty releases, release of deeds of trust are pretty much funding the department still. We don't have any new foreclosures this year so far, thank goodness. So after you sign this, I'll transfer probably around $50,000 to the general fund for the fourth quarter of 2021, and then the first three quarters of 2020. No, the fourth quarter of 2020, and then the next three quarters of 2022. So anyway, do you have any questions, or?
I do not. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Susan, I think, no. I know Dallas, you're on the, you're up in discussion later, so. Sam, do we have anything on the staff side?
Commissioners, I have several things to kind of give you updates on. The first I want to talk about is the 23rd Judicial District. As you know, we are splitting the 18th Judicial, 18th Judicial District into two. Arapahoe County will keep the 18th, and the 23rd will become Douglas County, Lincoln County, and Albert County. So there are ongoing meetings that we have been involved with at multiple levels of staff, at both on the district attorney's side, on how we split up that team, and also on the court's side, and how we split up that. So there are ongoing meetings, and we have been in, we're a part of both the planning process on both sides of that, and we are trying to get a scope of the impacts, both financial and operational, to the county, and we'll continue to keep you guys updated.
For the public listening, the change actually becomes effective on the, in 2025?
Correct, 2025. So we've got a couple of years to plan, but it's a big judicial district to split up, and yeah.
The last time a new one was formed was in the 70s, so it's an interesting ride. Thank you.
The second item I have is kind of an update on the public works facility. We are meeting actually with the design contractor and today to kind of finalize what that design's going to look like. We're talking to, Rota Bridge is talking, Facilities is talking with the planning shop on how to do the county-initiated rezone on that, and what we will do is at least one meeting in every month, we'll come and have Facilities and Rota Bridge Public Works Director come and give an update on the status of that, because it's a big project to get, try to get as much done this year as we can. The third thing I have, Commissioners, is just kind of an update on some planning we've been doing on the open space in Elizabeth and the Pines. We have about 33 acres there, and we have been talking with Elizabeth Parks and Rec about how to improve that and make it better open space slash park for the entire county to enjoy. We are going to have an open house next week to discuss that, invite all residents of the county to come and give input on that. Right now, the improvements that we're just in talks with, with Elizabeth and the, with Elizabeth Parks and Rec District is a walking path, an improved walking path around there, some unpaid parking, and then mowing and signage around that area, too. So we think this will be a great benefit to the community, but we do want to invite everybody that has any input on that open space to come to the open house next, on the 3rd, from 4:30 to 6:15 at Casey Jones Pavilion.
Thank you. Not seeing anything else, I'd move to open public comment. At this, this is the time for members of the public to bring up anything that's not necessarily on the agenda that we may take up at future meetings, or just to provide information. Amanda, did we have anybody that wished to be called, or any email comment?
No.
All righty, thank you. Well, with that, I'd open it up. For those in the room, do we have anybody that would like to make public comment, sir? As you come up, if you could just give your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to...
Morning. Would you like, just like a mailing address?
No, that's fine, yeah.
John Mott, Box 243, KIowa. And so I do, I do appreciate the opportunity to speak before the Commissioners today. So I'm part of the Albert County Environmental Alliance that deals with the XL, proposed XL Colorado Power Pathway Project, and part of it I'm upset with is that I called a neighbor only a couple of months ago, and I was talking to him, and then he says, well, doing all about the transmission line, and I go, what transmission line? And he says, well, he said, your property is part of it that is proposed to come right through the middle of, and it's like, I had no idea. I'm still a little irritated with that, that I understand there's not been application on it yet, but that I've never, there may have been a flyer in the mail, but it looked like everything else you throw away is a flyer, and there's still not been any outreach, and it directly impacts me. And more, I'm, a lot of what I talk about today is the economic impact, because I have very small property, I don't have very much, but it goes right through the middle of it, and it affects me in a couple of different ways. One of them is, my house is situated on a hill. By the time the power line is built, I will basically be looking right at the power lines, just straight across. Also have the ability to either subdivide if I wanted to, I have enough property for that, but more importantly, if I ever wanted to do a rental place, I already have power, I already have water, and the transmission line goes straight over top of that proposed thing. That's, that's theoretically $30,000 a year of income, that I don't know, I would not be as inclined to maybe build it. I don't know how many people really want to live under, I mean, right, directly underneath a big transmission line. There, the, so, and then the property value per se, you know. I understand if somebody moves into a place and there's a transmission line there and they buy it, but I bought it with the understanding, you know, like, I'm from the country, and I grew up in an isolated place. I'm actually from Montana. It's a beautiful place to starve to death, actually, but not a lot of work up there, but it's, I used to have property, some family property up there, beautiful place, and they're doing the same thing up there. We're getting, they've got the transmission line, what follows next is the wind turbines, and if anything, I detest wind turbines. I think they're one of the ugliest things. You have to be next to them, you hear them, you see them. I guess I'd be more inclined to take them if Steamboat and Vale and Aspen would build them up there. They don't seem to, is that my time?
Yeah, that's three minutes.
All right.
That is, sir, but thank you.
That's about it, but I do appreciate.
Just a quick question for you. When you give us a box, that's pretty hard for us to know where you, if I remember right, you lived just north of 150?
I lived just north of 150, off of Comanche Creek. Comanche Creek, go east off of 150, and I'm one of those properties that's just underneath the hill that it's going to go, and it's going to go, my understanding, it's going right through the middle of my property on the bottom side of it.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Not this, I think after a public comment, we might have a couple.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else that wishes to make public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. We have had a couple of meetings, kind of informal at this point, with XL, and our, what our drumbeat is to push that line as far east or outside of, I mean, right now, preferably farther east than the box that they're showing overall, and we'll keep pushing that. And I know El Paso County is not too thrilled with it either, and that's one of the entry points, and as you say, it carries power across the county, doesn't really provide anything to the county. And just one extraneous one, you had mentioned the wind farms. Senator Sonnenberg, who's the state senator for our area, is carrying legislation this year for, to require all wind farms to have radar-activated lights and retrofit existing ones, so the lights are not on continuously at night, but only activate if there's an aircraft in the area. So that's a, it's a small measure, but it's one I think we'll definitely support, so.
Yeah, just a quick comment. Our planning manager and myself met with XL, I guess it was, what, two weeks ago, and we explained to them that it would be very difficult to us to generally approve something that wasn't further east, and the reason for that is two or threefold. One is fire mitigation. If you have fires caused by that, out where there's no trees and things like that, fire containment is relatively common in Albert County. I've had fires on my place, they were started by lightning, but they still come and put them out relatively quickly. The other thing is population density. As you go east, there, the landowners are very large landowners, and if you go east of the Aggett Road, there's the Rush Creek power line already there, and myself and the planning manager recommended that they parallel that line. They didn't say yes, they didn't say no. They also had a lobbyist at that meeting, and I talked to him afterwards, and he said he would work on it. Whatever that means, I have no idea, but we, what Chris just said is real. We do not have a formal application, that the routing, routing, whichever the right way to say that is, of the line, has been moving around a little bit. So we'll just have to wait and see. I think that, well, let's see what the application looks like, and then we can do something.
Can I make one more quick comment?
So on this fire mitigation, it's not very well-known. I was actually in Kansas three, four weeks ago. They had a fire that was 400,000 acres, caused by power lines. At the end of it, there were a number of buildings burned, 1,800 head of livestock had to be shot, a lot of them had to be shot, two people died, and it wasn't really well-known, but that was directly a cause, the transmission lines, power lines causing it, 400,000 acres. Reason I know is I almost got caught in it.
Okay, thank you, sir. All righty, moving on to discussion items, the 2023 draft budget goals. Generally, we kick off the budget planning year with a set of Commissioners' goals to kind of guide the budget officer, and so what we've done to date is really distributed last year's with some notes to get feedback on what pieces of the guidance. It's been generally very similar for the last three or four years, what parts of it is really useful in developing the budget for the county, what areas may we want to focus on, or where other guidance is at. So we're kind of looking at finalizing that in our second meeting of February, but I don't know if you have anything, Sam, on that, or, and it's fairly high level. I mean, we always start with, we will have a balanced budget, but then we highlight specific areas that we'd like to see resources directed in accordance with our strategic plans. I don't know if there's anything else you guys want to add, or, all righty. All righty, so next up, we've got Tony McCormick, our finance manager, to provide us an update on the American Rescue Plan final rules. There's three of the, right? Just three rules, is that?
Say what?
Just three rules, that's what I understand.
Just three?
Yeah.
All right, so a quick update on the American Rescue Plan, Tony McCormick, Finance Manager. So they did issue the final rule, 437 pages, in the beginning of January, becomes effective the 1st of April, but we're encouraged and allowed to implement the rules prior to that date, as long as we're consistent. We can either follow the interim rule, or we can implement the, the conditions of the final rule. Some of the high-level points of the final rule expands project types that are allowed and able to be funded through the ARPA funds. It provides a interesting condition, so entities can use all of their ARPA award, up to a maximum of $10 million, as lost revenue, and to be applied for government services. In the initial rule, the interim rule, there was a complicated formula to figure out how much was lost, and going back several years and projecting into the future. Now we can just use up to $10 million, or our, in Albert County's case, the full award is allowed to be spent for government services. There are a few conditions on the government services where the funds reside, and we still have to identify the projects and the services that we are using that for. The rule also clarifies eligible uses of funds for capital expenditures, and streamlines some of the options for premium pay, and who is eligible to receive. It allows funds to be used for modernization of cybersecurity, and expands eligibility for water sewer and broadband projects within the county. We have reviewed, I've had one call with our external auditors, and we're reviewing some of the conditions and what we need to do to kind of best apply this final rule. One of the options is to recognize all that we've received and will receive this year as government services, and kind of proceed with the projects that we've already approved and moved forward with as far as, under the interim final rule. And then, of course, we're working with the county manager to incorporate everything and to move forward into the project justification as needed. So that's, that's the update high level on the, the final rule. I don't know if there's any questions on that specifically?
To remind me, that was, so we've received 2.6 million?
We've received 2.6 of a total of 5.2 that we will receive. We should, should receive the second tranche in June, about a year after the first bit.
Okay. Questions, or? Yeah, and I think you had mentioned the, the under 10 million was almost, 10 million's almost like the standard deduction, or you could go through the math, and?
Right, right, it's, yeah, exactly. This, to make it a little streamlined for the entities to not have to do as much paperwork and calculation, I assume it's going to be less work for Treasury to actually track and follow as well.
Thank you.
Just one quick question.
Sure.
Have we got a list of projects that we're going to be using this money for?
We do. We have a projected list that we put into the budget. Sam, the county manager, has worked with the department heads to put together a list and quantified those. This changes that just a little bit. We may not have to do as much, go through as much exercise to get those projects aligned, but we do have a list of things that we're expecting to use the funds for. And then briefly, just kind of to tag on to this, this has actually been updated, the 22 budget has been submitted to DOL, so that is well ahead of the, the January 31st deadline, and that's ready to go. And as well, the audit has started for 2021, so we've done interim fieldwork at the beginning or the end of '21, and then we're scheduled for April to have the auditors out here and really get into the details.
Yeah, and you were saying the final changes on the budget, we're formatting tables.
Exactly, yeah, there were just some, some page enumeration and fonts and a couple typos, but nothing, nothing significant.
Is that final budget also up on our website for public review, or?
That I don't know that it's been published quite yet.
Okay.
Has it been put to the website? Has the final budget been put to the website?
No, not yet.
Yeah, okay, thank, all right, thanks. All righty. Okay, thank you. All righty, the next item we had was just, Bart, I think you had some items that you felt we needed to work through on our current land use regulations?
Correct, yes, Bart Greer, County Attorney. The one thing that we're looking at is a very focused update to the regulations dealing with PUDs and PUD amendments. So that is going to be our initial focus, is going to be a very small, specific area change, and this is the, the start of that process, is really discussing it here at this meeting, getting a draft of those specific changes together, going through the notice process that is required, and then consideration for adoption. Of course, we do update our land use code on a, at least, we try for an annual basis, and we will continue to update other portions of the land use regulations that we have. Further down the road, it'll be a little more comprehensive, but this one area is something that I've been looking at, and with the review that I've done with Community Development Services, this is one area that we are looking at and think needs to be updated a little sooner than a more comprehensive update, and so that's what we're looking at.
Questions or comments? I just, again, I think it's, everybody's kind of aware that we've got developers knocking at the door, so if we need to make sure that regulations are right and right for the county as we, as they come forward. Thanks.
Commissioners, I just didn't know if you wanted to ask for public comment after any of those discussion, any of those discussion items?
Yeah, thank you. Was there any public input on any of the items that we had for discussion, either budget goals, the Treasury final rule, or land use update? Okay, thanks, Sam. Seeing none, we'll move on to action. First item we have is consideration of the January 12th minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the January 12, 2022 minutes as written, and dispense with the reading of those minutes.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the January 12, 2022 minutes and dispense with the reading. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item up we have is consideration of approval for the SIA, associated with the Spring Valley Ranch filing seven. Take a motion to open it, and then a little discussion.
I'll make a motion, we open discussion on approval of Spring Valley Ranch filing seven subdivision improvement agreement.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to consider approval of the Spring Valley Ranch filing seven subdivision improvement reg. Bart, if you could just kind of, I know it's kind of the follow-on to the land use approval.
Sure, I can kind of set the table. Bart Greer, County Attorney, as alluded to, this is the companion piece to the filing seven, the class that were approved, you know, I think two weeks ago. The subdivision improvement agreement is the agreement that deals with this portion of that development. It's essentially the same as at least the last two subdivision improvements agreements for the Spring Valley that have been in front of the board. I think very minor changes, essentially allowing for a few more homes to be built, but not occupied, and so that would allow builders to, I guess, get a little bit of a jumpstart and have more homes potentially available once the public improvements are complete and occupancy is available at that point. I have reviewed with various departments, nobody has any concerns about the slight uptick in, in the amount of homes that can be built but not occupied, and so my recommendation is for board approval.
Okay, yeah, and just to be clear, it doesn't add homes to the overall project, just essentially the, the model home type, homes that?
That's correct. The overall number of, of homes to be built is, is not increased with this. This is just when essentially model homes can be built, and some more of those are, are allowed to be built, but again, not occupied until the other conditions have been met.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I have not.
Okay. Any public questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I think we had a motion for discussion. I'll take a motion to... I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion. We approve the Spring Valley Ranch filing seven subdivision improvement agreement.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to approve the Spring Valley Ranch filing seven subdivision improvement agreement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All righty. Last item up we have for action today is consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing county clerk to enter into intergovernmental agreements and, and memorandums of understanding for the 2022 election year. Dallas?
Good morning, Commissioners. Dallas Schroeder, Elbert County Clerk and Recorder. This is a, a repeat. We've done this for several years now in a row to allow us to enter into those IGAs and MOUs without coming before you for each and every one. They're basically boilerplate templates that we have. It's just understanding between the different entities that we enter into agreements with, so there's clear understanding of what our responsibilities are and what theirs are. We have, of course, our primary election will be in June, general election in November, and we've already been contacted by two special districts of the possibility of them coordinating with us in May. And so those, that could increase, but as we, we enter into more of those, it's just a lot easier and more streamlined for us in the office to be able to, to enter those agreements that our ask is today.
My understanding is the town of Elizabeth is now gonna be coordinating with the November election instead of running there?
Yes. They're a measure passed in this past November.
Any questions or?
And these agreements, would we be with other governmental agencies?
Correct. So the IGAs are with other governmental agencies or special districts. So whether it's a special district, another town, fire district, so forth, the MOUs would be with like more private businesses, particularly what we use it for is at the Spring Valley Golf Course when we have our vote center there. They're not a government entity, but so it's just a different name, it's a memorandum of understanding, but it still does the basics. It still outlines our responsibilities and their responsibilities, so there's no confusion.
Do we have any public comment on this? Okay. Seeing none, I accept a motion to provide this approval to Dallas.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the resolution authorizing the county clerk to enter into IGAs and MOUs for the 2022 election year.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to approve the resolution authorizing the county clerk to enter into agreements for the 2022 election year. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
All righty. For our next meeting, I think we'll have the standard, the update of our, our pipeline report and consent. Kind of plugged in the budget goals for the second meeting. Do we have anything else teed up for that first meeting in November or February? Excuse me? Okay. Yeah. So if we can just make that kind of a standing first meeting thing, so. Are you out for the CCMA conference that week or?
They're both on the island.
Oh, okay. Cool. All righty. Anything else? All righty. Well, it's a small start. Maybe it'll be a short meeting. Okay. With that, the, the next thing we have on our schedule for today is quarterly Board of Health meeting and that's set for a hard time of 11:00 a.m. There were some other meetings that our public health folks had earlier this morning. So with that, we're in recess till 11:00 a.m. and we'll return at that time at this location. Thanks.